All right, it is now 4:05 and in the interest of your time that's valuable, we will go ahead and get started with the finance subcommittee meeting. And I would just like to thank my colleagues, Tim, Counselor Tim Allen, Counselor Jesse Letterman, and Counselor Adam Gomez for joining us. And thank you to Tim Brown, Lindsay Hackett, TJ Plant, and Melanie Akobi for joining us today for today's finance subcommittee meeting. So we will go ahead and get started. The first item on the agenda is funding sources for the shooting range. And I don't know who wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, so I'll start with the overall concept that I know Tim has a spreadsheet to show. So I know the firing range comes to nation with the city council and some members that the sticker shock that everyone got of $800,000 a year off of the contract to do a firing range. And we kind of want to explain that piece of it first and then talk about kind of where we went and what the strategies were when the city council cut it. So I understand the sticker shock, I know $800,000 is a lot of money. And where I was coming from when we entered into negotiations and ultimately negotiated the contract was I originally put out in the unique property designation that I was looking to pay about $450,000 because in my mind that made a lot of sense of how much would I be willing to pay to have a firing range? $450,000 given our market analysis that we're looking at for all the different options, you know, it kind of put us in the ballpark of kind of what made sense. As we were getting into the negotiations, we were realizing that the firing range was quickly becoming one main firing range and then two others, another long rifle or another firing range and then a tactic specific to allow them to do tactical training and other trainings that would be bringing in vehicles and whatnot. As the price started to go up, we were having the conversation about revenue sharing. And the idea was, look, you know there are police stations out there that want to do trainings, that have to do training, they don't have access to their own firing range. So we were gonna generate some revenue. So my cost benefit analysis, my thinking at the time was, okay, I wanted to pay 450, it got up to about 800,000 inclusive of the triple net lease, but I can generate hopefully up to 200,000 in revenue once we're up and running. And then we're gonna save $50,000 roughly, maybe a little less in the ammunition we were buying to fire weapons in Pearl Street. And then we're gonna save between 120 and 150,000 of a cost that could be incurred for the IIU, you know, the Internal Investigations Unit. And so as I was doing it in my mind, I was like, okay, if I can offset these costs, generate this revenue, I'll be back around the 400, 450,000 mark that I was pining on, which made a little bit more sense. And so we ultimately built it into the budget and the facilities budget because they pay all the leases for virtually all of the buildings that we occupy and use space in. And we built it 800,000 and then when the city council made the reduction to the firing range account, we went back and did the quick analysis and realized that they weren't finishing the project until November, December timeframe. So the 800,000 was actually closer to 400,000. And then if you see where Tim just put up on the screen, this is where we reduced the 400,000 to make the full cut that the council made and try to minimize the impact to the facilities budget. Now, I'm happy to go through all the line items, but the idea really was, okay, what can we do that's gonna minimize the impact? So we took 100,000 from electricity due to anticipated savings. Snow removal, we hope it doesn't snow, but we'll have to come back to the council if we need more money there. And then some of these other areas, you know, we were stocking up on custodial supplies for COVID, we're doing some other things. The whole purpose was not to impact or hurt Pat Sullivan's facilities operation, but to kind of monitor and then give him money and help him out where he needs help in terms of the budget. And that's kind of what we've been doing through a variety of sources. So right now, the buildings are mostly closed, we're not incurring as much expenses. But the whole concept was, look, we don't want to hurt Pat's operation, but we know we still want to move forward with the firing range lease as it was negotiated. And the need was there for the police department, the unhealthy nature of firing in the firing range and Pearl Street. Once I heard that, we knew we had to get them out of there. Would it cost us probably 25 million and four to five years to build our own firing range? This private company was able to do it in less than, or around six months and have us in there and have it be ready to go, which we transferred keys to the police department on November 1st. So that's kind of the overview, I'm happy to answer any specific questions. I don't know if Tim or Lindsay need to answer anything, but that's kind of where we're coming from. Just in summary, I know the 800,000 dollar provides sticker shock, but in my mind, the cost benefit made sense once we factored in savings and the revenue we can generate.
Thank you TJ, Lindsay, Tim, did you, either of you want to add anything? No, Tim?
Tim Allen?
Overview.
Oh no, Tim Brown, sorry. Okay, thank you TJ. The sticker shock wasn't so much 800,000 is the term, it's like 20 years of 800,000. So I think, you know, the sticker shock of that, of 20 years of paying 800,000, when, was there ever a plan to like add a firing range when you build a new police station?
No, so we actually had a lot of internal discussion with that. And Pat Sullivan, based upon what happened in Pearl Street was, if and when we get around to building the new firing range, we would pull anything out of the actual station headquarters because it's not a healthy environment to have the station be sitting on top of a firing range. And so that ended up being part of the factor of, we, I mean, we talked about doing a standalone building at 50 East Street, but we, you know, the math and the timing didn't work out for us. So yeah, so I guess the $16 million number that provides a sticker shock, you know, we were looking at 25 million, 20 to 25 million for doing it ourselves, but doing it with prevailing wage and the time it takes public construction, we weren't gonna have access to do that in years. And so the expenditure.
Is that, is that 25 million for the whole police station?
No, no, the police station, the police station is about 90 to 100 million as it is specked out from what I understand. So we got an air mark and a bond bill for $45 million. We would still have to throw in 45 to 55 million to build that building.
So TJ, I just wanted to say before I open it up to the counselors that, you know, the sticker shock is there, but it's more like we should have conversations ahead of time so that it's not just placed in the budget and then we're looking at it like, whoa, what's this and how to get there?
Yeah, I do actually, I will take some responsibility for that one, you know, because I agree with you, an expenditure of that magnitude, you know, we should be discussing. And I'll just say that was on me by the time we released the budget and got it before you guys. I didn't have the conversation or the hearings that were for that stuff, so.
Okay, are there any questions from the council on this item? For, Tim?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just was checking my mute. I don't have so much questions as much as the comment. For me, once we got over the not being in the loop issue or the sticker shock issue, whatever, was the strategy side. Having gone to see it and see the people who are gonna run it and talk about, you know, the, if you will, the state of the art nature of it. And I kind of feel like, well, all right, then we're, hopefully TJ will be able to find some of those numbers to go down, you know, get some people to lease our place, et cetera. But it just felt like it was a strategic move. More costly than we wanted, but that we've got that taken care of now for 10 or 15 years or whatever. And the 800,000 number will hopefully be smaller in the context of five years from now than it is right now. And I think when we compare 800,000 versus whatever, it's not 800,000 versus nothing. It's 800,000 versus three or four, 500,000 or whatever the number is. So that the incremental thing is not 800,000. It's, I would have felt we would have been paying something somewhere and it's the difference between that. So it's kind of a way I tend to look at some financial things.
Did you look at it over 20 years though? I mean, 800,000 over 10 or 10 years is different than 800,000 over 20?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's 16 million, I get that and I don't like that. But it's not 16 million against zero, it's probably 16 million against 10 million or 12 million or something that the other number would have been. And that bogey, if you want to call it that, the difference between the 16 million, and this is, I'm not trying to convince you, I'm just trying to, this is another way I look at things, is that we're gonna pay for something. I mean, do you buy a new car, do you buy a used car? You know, it's that same issue. Some people buy new cars and get leases and some people buy, I tend to buy old cars. And, and everybody has a way of justifying their own, in their own mind, why that's a good decision for them. And for me, the way I look at this is that, well, look, we're gonna spend something. And, and you know, if your number was, a reasonable number was 300,000 or 400,000 a year, I'm just picking that number. That's half of what this is, but that doesn't have the revenue possibilities of this. And it's also not creating a facility that's as good as this one. I don't know if you went on the tour Tracy, but it was kind of an impressive tour.
I was in the middle of the workday, so some of us don't have that luxury. But I can schedule one.
If you need to get there, I think it's gonna be run and once it's up and running, it'll be full 24 hours if necessary.
Okay, well, we'll figure it out. Thank you, Tim, I appreciate your perspective. Want to welcome the city council president, Justin Hurst, and he also has his hand raised for a question.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Whitfield, Chairwoman Whitfield. TJ, a quick question. So we were able to make it work this year with respect to the facilities budget because we had some unforeseen circumstances and savings as a result of COVID. What happens next year?
So in FY '21, we will build in the full lease amount for July 1st through June 30th. I guess if you're suggesting you're gonna cut it again as a city council, I'll have to spend some time really being strategic about how we're gonna deal with it.
Okay.
I don't know if that's your suggestion, I don't put words in your mouth, but our goal is to build in the lease.
But you did.
Come on guys, let's just have a respectful meeting. Go ahead TJ, finish.
No, I just said we'll have to be strategic and deal with whatever cuts the council makes, if they make cuts next year.
Okay, Counselor Gomez, did you, Counselor Hurst, were you finished or?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, I'll circle back around and I'll also yield to my colleague Counselor Gomez.
Okay, Counselor Gomez?
Honestly, you know, I think we're just asking questions and just, I just want to let the record show that regardless of whatever questions that we do ask, you know, I know you don't want to put words in our mouths, but it was super presumptuous and if we're gonna maintain respect and what I see consistently is that when we do ask questions, now you're assuming that we're gonna cut something that's six months out in front of us, which, you know, we want to make this work. We want to make sure that, you know, we're being sound and obviously, you know, you're careful, right? You do the numbers, you crunch the numbers and like you said earlier that you're gonna take the responsibility for, you know, this not being kind of, you know, ahead of schedule on, when I mean by ahead of schedule, but, you know, and us conversing about it prior to it. And I'm gonna be honest, and this is just quite frankly TJ, you know, I've been on the council for five years and yeah, if I don't reach out, you know, there's not really a proactive approach to try to convene or talk to some of the colleagues, you know. Some of colleagues have a stronger relationship with, with the administration and quite frankly, that's okay and there's nothing wrong with that. But I think, you know, moving forward, you know, this is a great discussion specifically to try to, you know, where people think that there's relationships that are unreplicable, but I think that there is ways that we can move forward and try to figure this out. You know, I think Counselor Whitfield did ask a great question that always was in my mind was, you know, of trying to figure out if this facility could have been put into, you know, the new police station down the line, which we do understand now that, and we have that, I know that's far out and it's in a bond bill that, you know, that we can't touch at the moment, but I think that, you know, this is an economic development kind of conversation as well as, and you know, me being the chairperson of economic development, it just sets aside that when it's, when it's about the city trying to generate funds or making money, you guys strategically, well, I'm sorry, let me not put words in your mouth. You guys sometimes like X out the fact that there's a chairperson that when it comes to revenue, making revenues standpoint, it doesn't, it's not part of the conversation. It's like, you know, you swipe it and then I feel sometimes slated that we have to make these drastic decisions on the floor and then all of a sudden, media gets a part of it and then we're getting dragged through the mud because we're trying to, you know, make some sound decisions with our backs against the wall. So, you know, I think we have six months to try to figure it out like you stated. And I think to say that we're looking to cut this out of the budget is presumptuous. If you found the funds to make it work, then you found the funds to make it work. And moving forward, obviously, the term limit of 20 years is a question. $16 million is a, is a big number, obviously. You know, you, you crunch those numbers and felt this is the way, this is the way out. I am a big, big proponent when it comes to making sure that our facilities are environmentally sound. And, you know, I would hate to continuously put any of our officers in that harms way. You know, I've been down there before and it's disgusting and I understand the challenges that they have and they face. But I think that, you know, obviously, I don't know all the numbers, you know, how to build the building, how much the building costs and how to build the shooting range. And in my mind, regardless, even if it's a million bucks, it's a million bucks to me is a lot of money, but $16 million also is an extraordinary amount of money. And, you know, we look for your leadership to let us know and advise us. So then when we're crunching these numbers and really trying to facilitate conversations with the community, so then it doesn't always look like it's us against, you know, the administration. I think that we're just trying to make sure that, one, we were aware, two, we understand exactly how this was put together and how we can be able to support it. So then the constituency has a better way because we're the ones that have to do the educating. We're the closest body to the community and when the community doesn't understand because we don't understand, then, you know, there's 13 of us, some of us are very wise and when it comes to putting numbers together like Councilwoman Whitfield and Mr. Tim Allen that are, have, their professions have been behind, you know, cramming numbers and doing the fiscal part of things. But when it comes to organizing people and an understanding of direction of how to, you know, corral a community of understanding during a temperature of this magnitude, you know, a shooting range really caused some conflict. It wasn't that we didn't want to support it and we didn't understand why and we didn't want to support it, it's just at the timeframe and what we were put under and the pressure we were put under on a community standpoint versus us looking at how to, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's, we didn't have the information. And I appreciate that you stepped up as of now and said that, you know what, you're gonna take some of that, that consequence of it being your fault. But I think that, you know, we have to get away from, you know, because anything that you guys do, regardless of how it looks at, the public's like it's our fault too. So we just have to do a better way of just making sure that we pushing these things forward. And that's all I wanted to say and just say like, you know, you made the numbers work. I appreciate that, you know, you coming back to us and working it out. But I look forward to, you know, a little bit more conversation and obviously with what's going on for the future for myself, that I hope that that door definitely is, is open to making sure that Springfield is successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Chairwoman Whitfield, good afternoon to everybody. TJ, thank you for the presentation, just some quick questions. With regards to the numbers you were showing us just a couple of minutes ago, you were saying basically how it's gonna break down for this year for $400,000. But I do believe that also includes what Counselor President Hurst was alluding to a TIF, even though it's not really a TIF, we're playing for the gas, electricity and taxes. Is that, the taxes and all that, is included on this numbers? Because I don't see it.
So overall leases would be 800,000 a year, that's included of all costs, the lease cost plus, the triple net lease with the taxes and the property maintenance. So, so when we find the $400,000 as the reduction to make it work, that's, that's inclusive of all costs.
So then, so that will be an accounting, that will be an accounting method to balance it out at the end, because I don't see it in the ledger here that you showed us.
Yeah, so what we showed you was just how we got to balance from the reduction that we had to deal with for fiscal 20.
Okay, all right, and TJ, I might have missed, you said that how much a bond would have cost us if we were gonna do a standalone building?
We're gonna stand on a building, it would be between 20 and 25 million dollars plus four or five years to build the building we were gonna, we were to do it, if we were to do it ourselves.
Four or five years, okay. So TJ, I have mentioned to you in the past that the possibility of doing a short lease. How's the administration feeling about that now?
So I would have loved to have done a short lease, but to make the numbers work for both parties, inclusive of the landlord, the investment they were putting into it, they wanted the 20-year lease that they were, I mean, I would love to have done a 10 to 15-year lease and had it all work out with the same numbers. But as we were getting to shorter terms, the numbers are kept growing and I may be uncomfortable with the amount that it was growing to.
Right, right, okay, all right. I do, I do agree TJ, as I mentioned, as I mentioned to you in the past, I went down with Counselor Allen and we saw the building, we saw the shooting range. And Counselor Allen is absolutely correct, it's state of the art, it's beautiful. And the cops do need it, there's no arguing about that. I personally, myself, I am very concerned, as I mentioned to you in the past, $16 million over 20 years with the possibility of a pending financial crisis after COVID-19. That is a very concern of mine and which at this point, it's open, it's up to the prerogative of the mayor to do so. I do realize the cops need it, the question is, who have we waited a little longer? Or we have, do that bond, I realize that's the mayor's decision. But I am concerned and I'm not arguing that because of the shooting range, they do, for the safety, for our safety and for the pride of the department. And so I will keep an open mind going forward. You know, $800,000 is a lot of money, but TJ, thank you, I know you work hard and I know you sit hard, you figure this out, try to figure out these numbers. So I thank you for that, thank you, Chairwoman Whitfield.
Thank you, Counselor. TJ, did we ever get numbers on the construction of the building of the shooting range?
New numbers are the numbers that they build into it, the numbers that it cost the landlord.
Numbers that it cost the landlord to build.
Actually, I've got estimates, but I've never gotten final numbers and I can ask, I'm not sure they're gonna necessarily share it, but I certainly can ask for it.
Do you know what it was estimated at, do you remember?
I don't, I'll talk to Pete Garby because he was the one helping me make sure the specs were what we needed him to be and kind of had a sense of what's the, the new roof showing up, the roof with steel for the new HVAC systems, the new HVAC system itself, plus all the shooting stuff, I'll have to get that from Pete and see where, I definitely put it in the 10 to 14, 15 million dollar range where we were, but I don't know for sure.
Well, if you could try to get actuals and send the estimate, that'd be great. TJ, are there any more questions on this particular item? Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Councilwoman Whitfield, I mean, more so just a comment and it's not, you know, it's not completely a finance issue. I think that this just shows, I think there's an appetite from the city council for there to be more legislative oversight of long-term leases. And, you know, that's a matter to take up with the law department, to evaluate the state laws and perhaps look at, you know, how we govern that within the municipality. It may be that in the future, you know, we want to move in the direction of seeing long-term leases be subject to some sort of legislative approval just because it locks us in for, for so long and essentially equates to, you know, an extremely large sum of taxpayer dollars being committed over, over a period of time. And so I think, you know, this has been something we learned, you know, from this process. This is certainly not the only long-term lease that the city holds and the state law is pretty clear around the purchase of property, but it is less clear around the lease of property. So, you know, I think it's just a conversation to have parallel to the financial conversation on this particular piece of property around, you know, in the future if we want to see, you know, that sort of legislative oversight. So, you know, those are, those are just my thoughts on it. And I certainly appreciate what the finance department is doing to make the numbers work in the best way possible. And, you know, I also think there's something to be said for, you know, the fact that, I think that, you know, if there was more legislative oversight, that might, you know, solve some of the concerns that counselors have brought up for future projects. But in the meantime, you know, this is where we are.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Allen?
Thanks, thanks Counselor Whitfield. I just wanted to mention one other thing, I'm not sure if it was mentioned earlier in this meeting. We also had the urgency here was also, we had to get out of the basement of Pearl Street from a health standpoint. So I don't have any more to say about that, I think we're all aware of it. But to me, it added some urgency to the project because of the health of the officers who use the Pearl Street facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. All right, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item and that's the MGM funding, past and present. I want to start with the present funding, just an update on where we're at with MGM payments, if there's been any negotiation with getting that payment.
So as of right now, they just paid us in full for FY '20, that one payment that they withheld, they paid us on November 2nd, I believe. So they, so they're full compliance for FY '20. Ed McCool is leading the conversations and the collaboration with them on FY '21 and talk about whether there's deferrals or any other changes to what they owe us. The city and the administration's position is, they owe us every penny that we're entitled to under the host community agreement. We recognize that, you know, given the COVID and being shut down completely for a couple of months and now with their new curfew, for lack of a better word, and shutting down between 9:30 and 10 o'clock, that is impacting their revenues. So we're still in active conversations with them about FY '21. The payments that they owe us aren't typically due till April as it relates to the 121A payments, but also we gotta talk about whether or not we want them to pay quarterly payments for the host community, other payments. So I don't know if that answers all your questions, if not, Lindsay and I can answer in more detail if you need it.
Any questions on that particular funding? I'm not talking about the 400,000 that we get. Tim, Counselor Allen? Where's that from before? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't lower your hand before, I thought you were reasoning for this.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's pretty clear. I know that Counselor Letterman wanted to host a meeting about the, I think it's $400,000 payments that we get annually from MGM and only a small portion was used for some school spending when we had the meeting in the city council chambers and we talked about having a committee. And I did ask to be on the committee to figure out what's gonna happen with the rest of the funding that we have available. Has anything happened with that funding?
So, good question. That all got caught up in the COVID, so we did spend 400,000 into the, for two, the Read Right Now program and the early education of the school department. As approved by the city council, we're gonna develop a process as it relates to how to spend the remaining community impact fee money that we have sitting there. And that just got devoured by the COVID and we haven't had a chance to sit down and reevaluate or come up with the process. But we're still happy to have that conversation, happy to think about it now.
But there is about 600,000 left, right? Because it was like a million dollars or something?
No, it's two, it's two and a half million a year we get for community mitigation and we've only spent 400,000 of it roughly. I don't know, Lindsay, is that accurate?
Let me pull it up real quick, just so we have accurate numbers. But yeah, it's 2.5 a year and you're aware of everything we've spent so far, so let me just pull it up.
Council Letterman, did you want to ask your question while Lindsay get that information, or did you?
Yeah, it'll take me a minute.
Sure, yeah, uh thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for putting the agenda item on. I was thinking about the Community Impact Fund, and I know that um, you know, during our budget hearing, not this year, but the the previous year we had discussed um when we had accepted the funds, uh you know, we accepted and also technically appropriated them, but we appropriated them in very broad terms. And so the commitment from the finance department was that they wouldn't spend the funds um without reviewing it with us, which they've honored and we appreciate that. Um and that then in the future, we'd develop a process uh by which those funds would be distributed uh for, you know, those within the confines of those categories of the host community agreement. So I was just wondering, you know, what, where we were with that, and I I can appreciate that COVID may have uh, you know, put us in a situation where we haven't been able to spend the time on on that particular development of those policies. But um, you know, hopeful, I, my hope would be that by the time that we're ready to adopt the next budget, um that we would at least have an idea of where where we're going with that, because uh the accepting and appropriating in in such broad terms, it just, you know, personally makes me uncomfortable. I'd I'd like us to have that process in place, so when we're asked about it, we can say, well, here is exactly how those funds are gonna be allocated. So um I certainly recognize COVID would would put a delay on that, but hopefully, my hope would be by the next, you know, fiscal year, we'd be in a position.
Counselor, I think we could commit to having minimum framework, if not the process, uh by the time we release FY twenty-one's budget.
That's great.
Thank you, Council Letterman.
Thanks, Council Letterman, and we definitely owe you that, and it's something that TJ and I do discuss, and I think that that's completely fair. Um, I'm just looking at Munis for this fund. Tim, you don't happen to know the fund's number, do you?
Um, you know, I don't think we put it in its own fund, I think it's HCA nineteen and twenty, it took me a while, we have so many grants called mitigation.
Because we should have two years' worth of it.
We do, we have two years' actuals.
For two years.
Yeah.
So I found, I found the total, it looks like um there's, there's four point one million, which would be the two years.
Yeah, that makes sense, four hundred thousand that's spent or appropriated.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Because um
One year is appropriated.
This, we have a little bit more um leniency when allocating these funds, correct?
Correct.
And then um, so you guys know that I feel very strongly about the gun violence that's happening in the city of Springfield. And um if there's any type of um funding that could be spent to combat that, you know, um I think that we need to be more aggressive when it comes to um gun violence in the city of Springfield. Uh while a certain, a certain population has been um that are dying right now, it affects the whole community. And so um we need to really, you know, take a a strong look at that. Um and I know that the mayor has some initiatives coming out through Health and Human Services, but even if we could fund more outreach workers or or something to that effect, then um hopefully that could be part of the discussion.
Counselor, I just want to add that um I owe you some information about SSYI, and I was thinking that it was gonna be on the agenda today, but I see that it's not. So I have those numbers for you.
Okay.
As far as the current grant budget and the vendors, so I'll send that to you after this meeting.
Perfect, you're the best, Lindsay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions about the MGM funds, past and present? Or comments? Counselor President Hearst?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a quick question, what are the parameters around how these funds can be spent? Have you guys addressed that already?
Uh, in previous meetings, but no, so uh there are basically two main funding sources outside of the seventeen point six million that we get, and that's uh known as community mitigation, which is the public safety uh side of the house, it's built into the general fund as general fund revenue and supports our public safety initiatives. And then there's two and a half million for the community impact fee, which basically goes from anything from economic development to libraries to education, I mean, virtually anything that we think will improve the community. Uh and that money uh is sitting there with a balance of four point one million uh way for a process to be developed on how we think we want to spend it. Uh and that's what I committed to get into the council. Um by the time we get the FY twenty-one's budget released, is coming up with a process and a concept of how to spend that money.
And when is the next payment due, and are they also locked into that payment by the um host community agreement as well?
Yes, they're locked into both those payments, and I don't know, Lindsay, if you know when they're due.
Is it April?
They're due when we invoice them.
Otherwise, it's quarterly, right?
Not for this one.
Not for this one, okay, so we need to send an invoice, so we can send an invoice for the two and a half million.
So this one's gonna be annual?
We ask for it annually, just because we don't really want it in quarterly payments, we are, not this one, we ask for it annually, just to be honest, so.
Correct. There's a stipulation in the HCA that we can ask, if we do it in a certain timeframe, before the fiscal year starts, we can get the payment in one lump sum versus quarterly installments.
Yeah. Alrighty, thank you. Any, any other questions from, from the council? Yes, Council Letterman?
Uh thanks, Madam Chair, yeah, I would just request that, you know, when finance is ready, um for that budget comes out, maybe we could have a meeting just on that, and then also.
I think that's a good, I think it's a good idea, just to have a concept of where the framework's going, to make sure we're all on the same page.
And then maybe we could also, to the chairwoman's point earlier about, uh, you know, the initiatives that that she's interested in, maybe we could also, you know, bring, bring some of those, just to kind of get that conversation started.
Yep.
Sounds like a great idea. Thank you, Council Letterman. Always have great ideas. Um, okay, we'll move on to the next agenda. I, oh, Councilor Allen?
Yeah, thanks, I just, just put that in there, so thanks for catching it. Um from the, Tracy, from the, from the days of the Violence Prevention Task Force that I was a regular attendee of and helped to run it for a few years, um we always kept track of the Shannon money. And I think, Lindsay, you just mentioned the SSY something, that was second, I can't, can't remember that, what that stood for, but I remember Brian Elliott would always come and pitch to us for what the police wanted to use that for or something. What is that one called?
So that's the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, and that's specifically for gun violence, like um Counselor Whitman said, uh sorry, Counselor Whitfield said. Um I try to remember not to call you Tracy when I'm on these, so then I get so then the Shannon is specifically for gang violence.
So gun and gang, okay. Uh I remember we used to talk about them all the time, and there, there used to be a guy named Harrington, I forget his first name, who coordinated all the Shannon stuff. Um is there anybody in the position of those? I know this isn't what we're talking about here, but does anybody coordinate either of those as the money comes in? Or is it just through you guys kind of thing?
Is it you, Melanie?
Not at this point, but we're having conversations with the police department of providing additional uh oversight over the Shannon and all the grant processes of the police department.
I mean, that's what that guy Harrington did, and I always had a sense that he was on top of where the money was going and all that. I don't know what happened to his position or to him, but um Brian Elliott was also being involved heavily in that, but I think he went back onto the regular police force. Um and I don't know who's in that role now, but
We know all the twelve partners and the police department uh overtime gets the money and how much they get. Uh we recently had the police department reach out to all the partners to find out how much they're, they're gonna spend between now and the end of the year. And we're prepared to sweep back all unspent funds uh and put it into police overtime to combat gang violence.
Okay.
My concern isn't the organizations that receive it, the data behind what they're using it for. Um, that's the information that um concerns me more. I want to know percentages, who they're helping, what's the outreach like, what's the preventative work like? Um overtime is great, but is there any outreach or preventative initiatives happening from the police department? Um, things like that, and so that's more of what where my concern is with.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I agree with you, that is exactly what we're asking for, is for the empirical data and for the uh evidence uh base data that uh who are we helping and how well are we doing it?
Yeah.
We're starting to ask those questions. Um I recently got involved, by me, I mean, my team uh in in these conversations, so we're still trying to uh get caught up on everything, but my, my goal for Shannon going forward and any grant for that matter, is to understand that making sure these dollars are spent wisely.
Thank you, TJ, and we'll have a separate meeting on those grant funds. I'm not gonna try to meeting you guys to death, but
No, no. I'd rather have the dialogues and have uh the council know what we're thinking and what we're doing. Uh we like to think we're on top of things, but there are things that we want to be, want people to ask questions about, and Shannon came up in a recent budget hearing and got us really digging into what's going on with the grant, and I have a lot of questions, and now we're getting to the bottom of it.
I do want to stay on task, Council Gomez, is this related to MGM funds?
No, it's related to a question that he stipulated about taking the funds back from those organizations to do overtime.
Okay.
Um, the question is, um, uh which respectfully, uh I think that that's a, I'm happy to hear, hear that, TJ. Um but secondly, uh for taking back some of the funds, is there a stipulation of when you give out the funds, they can use that um at their discretion to do that kind of uh work for taking to gangs or to uh, to gangs or to guns, right?
Yes, so
So they can employ people? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, so it depends on what their, their grant submission was or their application was, and our goal is never to take money back from the funding partners, our goal uh
I understand.
And our goal is for them to spend every penny towards the goals outlined in the, in the grant. Our issue has been, is we're asking them now, like I'll use the uh parks for an example, they had sixty-five thousand for evening gym.
Mm-hmm.
Open evening gym, so we might as well pull that sixty-five thousand back from the parks and put it into overtime. And so if there are other funding partners out there that just say, hey, we can't, we can't spend it, then we're gonna look at uh reality.
Come
If they spend it, hundred percent, go ahead and spend it before December thirtieth, thirty-fourth.
Alright, so it's, it's the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, I apologize.
I just want to make sure that makes sense.
No, no, I just wanted to make sense for me too, just um in case they, because sometimes, you know, the organizations might call us down in the interim if they hear this, say, well, they're gonna take the money back and and somebody's employed and, and you know, I I'm just trying to, you know, get in front of it, that's, that's the reason why I have my questions.
Hundred percent, anything that's earmarked and they're gonna spend for the remainder of the grant, we're not talking. If it's money just sitting there that they say, look, we're not gonna spend it because we can't, they'll know we're taking it back, so they shouldn't be able
Understood, understood, alright, fantastic, thank you so much, thank you for clearing that up.
Um TJ, Lindsay, Tim, I don't know who could work on it, Melanie, um can we get an actual copy of the grant submissions um from the organizations?
So I can see if I get a copy of the grant submissions, I have on my desk as of right this second, a copy of all the contracts with them. But if you want the grant submissions, I'll have to see if we can dig those up.
Contracts will work too.
Okay, I got those.
Until we get the grant submissions, because they both, thank you.
Madam, Madam Chairwoman, um are those the contracts for the ones that received it passed? Because I know that probably there was, I know that in our last council, uh talking about these, this specific grant, that other organizations may have already applied from, and that that you guys are into another process of evaluating if those same organizations that got them before might be receiving them again. Am I, am I, am I right?
Yeah, so I don't know if I'm getting way ahead of myself on this one.
Well, I don't want you to, I don't, I don't want you to like overspeak or anything, I just
Sorry.
Yeah, let's have a separate meeting, give you more time to get the, get the um data. I know that I read in the press release that all organizations from the past reapplied and one additional organization um that wasn't in the grants before, all reapplied for the new grant for, for um January, that comes out in January, so that they can use for January, I think it comes out in December.
Yep.
But we'll have a separate meeting on that, because I want, I do want to get to the bonds and what they can be used for, so we'll, we'll go there. Um, are there any bond funds that may be coming up, especially the five-year ones for private ways or any excess um money that we could use to go for certain projects?
Yeah, as of right now, we have about nine hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in unspent bond proceeds as it relates to buildings. Uh the way uninvolved, unspent bond proceeds work is, you can spend it on something that's equal term or longer term than what the bond, original bonds are issued for. And what that means basically, if you do a ten-year bond for a truck, uh for DPW trucks, and they come in uh last thing we have, and you have a half a million left over, you can do it for ten years or longer than ten years. Uh if you do twenty, twenty years for a building, they have to be twenty years or possible thirty years. Uh and that's why we struggle when we talk about private ways, is we can't necessarily use unspent bond proceeds for that, but we can use it for building improvements, road improvements, park improvements, not even road improvements, right, Tim? That's now fifteen?
Yeah, road improvements are fifteen, and we don't have a lot of that either.
Yeah, so
Road improvements different from private ways? Is that the same? Road improvements and private ways, is that the same?
No, and that's kind of why it's kind of confusing is, you think private way improvements is road improvement, but sometimes uh private ways is just an arterial paving, which is cheap, and sometimes it's like a half a million dollar redoing the drainage, the curving, the sidewalks, uh utility cuts and all that stuff that end up being um, that make it where it's five-year instead of, I mean, it's just one of those flukes of the law that says private ways aren't uh fifteen-year, twenty-year debt.
Um, do you have like an average cost for private ways?
So they range, what I'm told by DPW, from, it's anywhere from fifty or sixty thousand for a quick uh pave over to half a million dollars for the full workup uh of how, what needs to actually be done on the, depending on, like, if it's a dirt road and needs to be fully created into a public way, it's a very different expense than if it just needs to be repaved.
Oh, repaved, because I think we're, we were talking about private ways that haven't been paved at all, so that's
That those numbers tend to be a lot higher, to bring it up to public way standards.
So for the nine hundred thousand plus that you have left, are there any um projects you guys have in the pipeline that you're considering using that?
So
Bond on?
I haven't talked to the mayor about this yet, but uh I just got an email on Monday, or Friday, recently, that SciTech has a major crisis with one of their electrical systems or whatever, that's gonna cost roughly a million dollars. And so I don't know what we're gonna do yet, I haven't figured out all the strategies, but the nine twenty-two is on the table as a possible way, because it's twenty-year debt. Uh we issued it, I don't know how long ago, Tim, and now we're running, we could be running into arbitrage issues if we don't spend it. So I'm not there yet, I just gotta still digest what will really need to happen at SciTech, because a three hundred thousand problem turned into a five hundred, turned into a seven hundred, and now it's close to a million. Uh I gotta really dig into it before I make a recommendation to the mayor and the city council, but projects like that is something I'd come for the council for.
Okay, um
What we have for is an emergency, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, we gotta get the electrical done, um for sure. Kids are gonna go back to school someday.
Someday, right?
Hopefully soon. Come on, Kobe, go away.
Yeah, I got two people on my tree.
I got four now, I got my brother's four, so, yeah, I, I am understanding the pain, but um yeah, so I just would ask, I know you had a meeting with Tim on capital projects today, but I just would ask if um unspent bond funds come up, if we could have um meetings regarding what capital projects make sense prior to just, you know, getting it on the agenda.
Um, yeah, that, that's certainly a fair question. We don't have much, but we should be talking about strategies, just so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to um explain, and I know I always kind of like try to explain the process from our end, so you guys understand it. So in order to get to unspent bond proceeds available to s- to spend, it is well after a project is completed, and the ribbon's been cut, and everybody's been in there, and I'm thinking about the library. Everybody's taking books out already. Um it's gonna be well over that, because in order for us to transfer unspent bond proceeds to another project, project has to be closed out completely, meaning any reimbursable dollar that we're getting is in, every single last invoice has been paid. So um we don't really know what the unspent bond proceeds would be, if there are any, um until well after a project is completed um and in use pretty much, so just so everybody understands that process.
Thank you for explaining that timeframe. Is there any um questions from the council on bonds? Counselor Davila?
Sorry, it was muted there, uh thank you, uh Council uh Chair Whitfield. Uh TJ, I was just to be clear, uh did you say the bond money could be used for private ways?
Cannot be used for private ways.
Cannot be used.
Yeah, because it's not five-year debt. The only five-year debt we may issue would be for technology. I don't intend, is there any Yeah, because it's not five-year debt. The only five-year debt we may issue would be for technology. I don't know, Tim, is there any other five-year debt we've done?
No, we did body, body worn cameras, but we're gonna spend all that on the cameras, so.
Oh.
Cars, we've done cars before.
Five or ten?
They're normally five, but um, you know, you only end up with these really small amounts if there's anything left over, because. They'll get as many vehicles.
Time is so quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, whenever uh, maybe Lindsay, when you were saying that once a project is completed, the last invoice was paid. Before any money can be transferred to any other account. In the meantime, that money stays in that account or does it go to any? Transitory account?
We can.
That money's, yeah.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say that money stays in that account until city council approves to transfer somewhere else.
Correct.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Alright, any other questions from the council on this? Alright, well, we have our final um, agenda item, which is COVID-related expenses transferred. Out of the general fund and what, I don't know what I was trying to say here, but I just want to look at COVID. Um. Uh, thank you, Adam, uh, Council Gomez. Um.
So I'll give you the overview and then I'll let uh, Melanie get into the details as the point person for this. So as of uh, this week, we have uh, spent between grant funds and the deficit spending account. Uh, just over ten million dollars. And we're right now, we have about six point five million dollars authorized in the deficit spending account, and we can get into what that means. Uh, we have lost uh, six point seven million in revenue, uh, and that's just local source revenue, that's not property taxes. It's hotel motel, it's meals, it's um, motor vehicle excise, interest earned on penalties. Building permits, all that stuff. We've lost six point seven million dollars. In the past two weeks alone, we've lost over eight hundred thousand, actually eight hundred and seventy thousand in lost revenue, so we're heading in the wrong direction. So between the lost revenue and the six and a half million in the deficit spending account and all the grants Melanie's about to show you. Uh, overall, we're in pretty good financial shape, but we are not over the hurdle uh, and by any stretch, as this continues to drag on. Um, we are actively uh, going after all grants that we're entitled to, both city and schools. And we are being very strategic with what we're doing with FEMA reimbursement and with the uh, direct money we receive from the federal government. Um, that, that, you know, CDBG, the uh, emergency shelter grant and uh, JAG and some of the other ones that we've received. Uh, so we're trying to maximize everything, but we do know that we need a, we hope for. A, another stimulus from the federal government that actually backfills lost revenue. Uh, as it relates to cities and states, and hoping that that comes to fruition. Having said that in the backdrop, you probably want to see the real numbers, which uh, Melanie will now go into and kind of explain. Our approach for this entire pandemic. Melanie, can you give Melanie access if she doesn't have it?
Have it, yep. I was just gonna wait till you're done. Thank you, TJ. So let me just go ahead and share this screen. And of course, I don't need to minimize that. Can you all see the spreadsheet?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yes.
So I'll go over this and feel free to ask any questions if something doesn't make sense. So. The first tab here, what I have is a summary of the expenses that we have on Fund nineteen oh five, which is a deficit spending account. Uh, the reason why I have these categorized uh, is because these are the funds that I'm directly monitoring and applying for, which are eligible for both FEMA and CARES. So overall, the total is about five point five million dollars from March through September. And so these are the categories of spending, which I literally stole from the application that we submitted uh, for CARES. So as you see, the bulk of the expenses on this fund are due to school distance learning, so think laptops, the sleeves that come with the laptops. Uh, sometimes they have to buy like the hotspots for uh, students that don't have Wi-Fi access. All those kind of um, expenses are on this account that are eligible for reimbursement, which is the highest uh, category that we have so far for spending. The second highest category we have is for shelter for those who are homeless, which is essentially uh, the temporary shelter that we have for friends of the homeless. So these are the expenses, which are most of the expenses. There's still some late invoices that are coming through that I'm going to submit on our third application in FEMA, but as of now. This is the total sum of the expenses for the tent, uh, the installation and removal, operation, all of that. Any questions regarding uh, this tab before I move forward?
Um, this is, these are just the deficit spending that you can transfer, but there's more in the deficit spending account that? Or is this the total amount that we deficit spent?
This is the bulk of what has been uh, deficit spent, correct, on the Fund nineteen oh five one.
So we added more since this, because we've just authorized Pat Sullivan to do uh, carrier systems and the eye waves.
This is through September. Uh, and this also does not include any direct expenses that were done to the bridge, which we'll review on the second tab.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not for me, counselors?
Uh, no, no, thanks, that's good.
Okay.
Great, so moving on to the second tab, so this tab is a summary of all of the COVID-related grants that the city, inclusive of the school department. Has received from the beginning of the pandemic to date. Um, so as you can see, we have quite a few here, which is totaling about thirty-two point uh, two million approximately. In awarded funds, so some of these came in different rounds, and you may notice when you had to do the approvals in city council, like CDBG, for example, had one round, second round. COVID, you just approved the second round. These are all basically added up for the ones that had multiple rounds. So um, the reason why I put here the categories of the department is because the city, this grant, the COVID Relief Fund, which is also the CARES Act. This is the one where um, pretty much all of the Fund nineteen oh five expenses either go there or on the. But then other departments receive grants that are very specific to their department or purpose, of which are listed below. So even though the number may be high, we can't, for example, use this grant for whatever, it has to be specifically for schools and this for ESG. Does that make sense? So here is the summary of all of the expenses to date for each of those grants, which is about eleven million.
Um, before you move on, Melanie.
Mm-hmm.
It's showing that we have an available balance of ten million, I'm just looking at citywide. Um. The nineteen oh five spending, has that already been? Taken out of the ten million, like, has it already been transferred?
Yeah, great question. So the number that's summarized here, it was charged initially to Fund nineteen oh five, and then once we were awarded the CARES Act and CARES approved those expenses, they were moved on to. This grant, which is why it's reflected here.
So these are all actual available balances as of what date?
As of now. Okay, and then the.
Sorry, Melanie, so we have a strategy right now, uh, we have to spend that ten point one million by December thirtieth.
Correct.
And uh, the other stuff that we're putting into this, we're putting everything on the deficit spending account for tracking purposes, once we've determined the funding source, we move it off. And so there's a number of expenses uh, that we are carrying in the deficit spending account that will eventually charge the rest of the fund. And then there's another anticipated amount that's gonna be charged uh, between now and December thirtieth.
And for the other grants, like, let's say, specific to um, HHS or libraries, um. Those have to be spent by December thirty-first too, or they have different.
They all have different timelines. The soonest one that I know of is the largest one, the December thirtieth deadline.
So the policy, just for the council to be aware, is right now, the money that is in the care, the ten point one remaining balance, a thirteen point six total. Is a pass through from the federal government to the state, and the state to us. Now, they keep changing the rules on us on what's eligible and what's not, because the state has their own deficits they're grappling with for fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, so they're looking to hopefully get money back from us. We have zero intention of giving money back. We have strategies to make sure we spend the full ten point one. Having said that, we want to be strategic. We'd love to have it extended to June thirtieth by the federal government and state, so we can be strategic and spend it on everything we need. But I'd much rather have the money stay in Springfield than go back to the Commonwealth.
Alright. Questions from the council?
Uh, no questions.
Okay.
I have a quick, if I may.
Yes, and then Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thank you, Chairwoman. Um, Melanie, just going back to the uh, I I couldn't see it at the beginning, for the expenses. Um, the actual, you mentioned the top three expenses during COVID nineteen, yeah, I'm just wondering, um. Is the PPE in there? Wait, I see it now. Okay, I see it. Two hundred and fifty-six thousand. Now, is that for? Only for the public or I'm specifically looking for the money spent on PPEs? And ninety-five mask, facial mask for the cops and firefighters?
So that's a great question. That's actually, TJ was saying how they're changing the rules on us, this is exactly one of those that they did change. So originally FEMA was going to be covering for any PPE and cleaning supplies purchases that municipalities were purchasing as a result of COVID. So basically from March through August, it was all FEMA. Then mid-August, they sent out a memo, FEMA did, and so did FEMA, saying, oh, no, no, we're no longer going to be paying you for PPE and cleaning supplies that's coming from uh, anything but public safety. So, and then they had us submit another application uh, by the deadline that they gave us. As of anything after November fifteenth, that's PPE and cleaning supplies, that's not public safety. Um, hopefully CARES will pick up on that funding, because we'll no longer cover for that.
So how are we funding the PPE for the first responders?
So for doing it, we're still charging it on the deficit spending account, and the strategy to go ahead and request that through CARES, through the reconciliation process, that they ask every quarter for you to report on what. Your spending is, and based off of the meetings I've had with the state, they've requested that if FEMA doesn't cover for those PPE and cleaning supplies, then you would list those on the CARES Act.
The Council, Councilor Digo, this is uh, the key part to this is right now, we have a um, storage facility that contains probably. Two hundred and fifty thousand surgical masks, a hundred and thirty thousand KN ninety-five masks, probably a hundred thousand or so N ninety-five masks. All the gloves and face shield and everything that we need are all up at Tabby Street and Allen Street. Uh, that we have ready to be dispersed uh, beyond what the police and fire ordered directly. Uh, so they have all the PP and access to all the PPE they need. Uh, they've been offered, we just ordered a hundred thousand surgical masks uh, yesterday or delivered today. Um, so we have uh, all the PPE we're gonna need, and first responders have the first right of refusal, or first access, I should say, so.
The bulk of that has been through donations?
Uh, well, it's been donations, but we've, we purchased a lot of, and when we couldn't get N ninety, N ninety-five masks, we purchased a bunch. We purchased a bunch of KN ninety-five masks, and now, as you probably imagine, KN ninety-fives are not as hot, hot as a product as the UCP, the N ninety-fives are available for similar price. Uh, we purchased surgical masks, so uh, beyond the donations, we have been able to uh, stockpile everything we need. Uh, in an inventory that we have available uh, for all departments, but especially our first responders.
My final question, will you be able to tell me regarding the PPEs, how's the um, the logistic chain gotten better? Are we having the delays with, with delivery?
Everything's fast, I mean, everything's better, uh, places are now, logistic is, is much better. Uh, and we're actually, surgical masks we ordered yesterday showed up today, so.
Okay.
It's a little more lead time for the N ninety-fives, but we have that, and we're okay with it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, um, Counselor Letterman, I do want to end this meeting at five fifteen, because I do have another meeting to prepare for, so um, Counselor Letterman?
I was just wondering if we could have the um, spreadsheet shared with us?
I have it, and I'll share it with um, Kelly and Susan.
Kelly and Susan said it on too, I thought they.
Oh, yeah, I think they did.
Already, it may already be shared.
I think so, but if not.
And, you know, we did do a letter, uh, we did do a letter to uh, our federal delegation about the need for uh, the funds to be freed up for. Um, mitigation of lost revenue, and um, we can resend that as well. I, I think everybody signed it, but we can just reshare it with the federal delegation. Hopefully, under uh, new administration, we might move in a better direction.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Melanie, did you want to continue?
Yep, so basically the last part of this um, same tab here, in case you have any questions as to what this big yellow blob is. So because I've mentioned FEMA a lot and you don't see it listed here, and that's because, um, as I mentioned before, those applications have been submitted, but they're unfortunately, due to the large volume of applications, still under review. So this is just a summary of what has been applied for so far. And if we were to get approved for those total amounts, FEMA only covers for seventy-five percent. Twenty-five percent, they're allowing us to use the CARES funding for, so that would be something that we would utilize once we get any notification as to what an award may look like, but unfortunately, we're not there yet, so. So that you have that summary, it's right there.
So TJ.
Yeah.
If we. Transfer some more expenses to the city statewide, I mean, the citywide um, account, the ten million, does that free up? Any general fund revenue?
Unfortunately, it does not free up any general fund revenue or general fund expenses. We kept it all on the deficit spending account.
So basically, you gotta buy with that money, like? Where are you gonna go?
This is helping us cover the deficits that we've incurred to, to operate during the pandemic. Um, and it's also, you know, like for the ESG, they're able to do some uh, targeted outreach through Tim Sheehan's group uh, for that stuff. Um, so we're trying to spend, we'd love to free up general fund dollars, except that we can't, we just don't have a ton that we can free up with this money.
But like, for some of, like, I'm looking at elections, and they got a grant that you could spend whatever you want on it, right? That's what she said in the meeting, and. So if you transfer some of the expenses, expenses from the elections office, you're able to sweep some of that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if that is what the grant terms say, absolutely, we do that. Uh, the other idea we thought about is using whatever portion for new voting machines or sweeping it and then putting it towards, what I mean? So yeah, I guess, I'm sorry, in that case, there may be some of that, uh, there isn't a ton in these grant applications that allow that. Elections was probably the most um, liberal in allowing us to do that. Like, the firefighter grant was literally for PPE for firefighters, you know, and the police grant, we used to buy police vehicles for the ritual, one-to-one. Uh, one-to-one, a one-person vehicle, uh, one officer and one vehicle for COVID reasons, so. Uh, but we will continue to look at different ways to save general fund dollars.
Okay. I have a meeting offline about that.
Yep.
Um, any other question? Oh, Melanie, I'm sorry.
That's fine, this is just the last tab that has a summary of the, um, because uh, Counselor Whitfield, you had asked for the expense category, so these are exactly from the CARES Act. So it's just what they named the category, and then you can filter here to find out what's FEMA versus CARES.
Yeah, this is great, Melanie. Thank you so much for putting that together. Appreciate that. Um, any other questions from my colleagues before we let you all go to rest? Alright, saying no questions, we will um, conclude today's meeting. I thank everybody for joining us, thank you for all the information that you had today. And um, I'm sure we'll be talking again soon.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.